Wow, thank you all for joining us tonight on the January 19th Louisville City Council Meeting. I'm Mayor Ashley Stolzmann. Because of COVID-19, the meeting's being held electronically and it's being recorded. To request permission to speak during public comment period, an attendee can raise their hand by clicking on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in can dial *9 on their phone and a raised hand will appear on your behalf. When I acknowledge a member of the public and the clerk unmuted, you'll need to state your name, address, and your question or concern. Each person will have three minutes for their comments. If you'd like to speak on another topic, just go ahead and raise your hand again. Thank you for following these directions and helping us to maintain meeting decorum. Could we please have a roll call?
Mayor Stolzmann?
Here.
Mayor Portemaloni?
Hi, Maryus.
Good evening. Councilmember Brown?
Here.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Here.
Councilmember Fink?
Here.
Councilmember Lay?
Here.
Councilmember Lipton?
Here.
Thank you, everyone. Could I please get a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve the agenda?
Is there a second? Thank you. There's a motion and a second. And I'll just make a comment that we do have two guests this evening. One, Boulder County Public Health, who I see is already on, and the other are regional transportation district directors, and they are going to be joining us at 6:45. So if for some reason we get through, ahead of time, we may be moving item C and B around in order. So just giving everybody a heads up of that. Are there any other comments on the agenda? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, everyone. The agenda is approved. That takes us to our public comment period for items that are not on the agenda and items that are on our consent agenda. If any members of the public would care to speak on items that are not on our agenda or items that are on our consent agenda, go ahead and raise your hand at this time. And if you've dialed in by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing *9. Our first commenter is J. H. Cooperman. And we will get you unmuted here, and then please tell us your name and address, and then tell us what you'd like to tell us. Go ahead.
Hi, my name is Josh Cooperman. I live at 2165 Wagon Way. I've noticed that there is not a, an advisory board having to do with transportation issues. And I was just wondering, is there's any reason that there is not an advisory board on transportation? And since there isn't, if there's another board that should address those sorts of issues, or if there's any chance of creating an advisory board on transportation issues? Thanks.
Thank you very much. And just, so you know, we have council comments in a couple agenda items, so we usually get back to folks when we get to the council comment section. This section will just take all the public comments on any topic, and then we'll continue on until we get to our council comments. Any other members of the public care to comment at this time? Seeing none, that takes us to the consent agenda. Could I please get a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Seeing none, the motion carries. That takes us to council informational comments on pertinent items not on the agenda. I'll just start off by saying thank you to the commenter. You can submit your comments directly to Public Works or the City Council on transportation. We did do a big engagement program last year on transportation community-wide to get feedback from lots of folks, but contacting your ward rep on City Council or Public Works directly is a great start for general transportation topics at this time. And we definitely revisit board and commissions and the different makeup of those. So it's really helpful to get your feedback that there's interest in a transportation board. Any other council informational comments on pertinent items that are not on the agenda? Seeing none, that takes us to the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I was gonna turn it over quickly to Megan Pierce. She's gonna give a brief update on grant program.
Great. Megan?
Good evening, council. So just want to provide you with a brief update on the small business preservation grant program. I'm gonna share my screen with you, so we can all look at a table of the same information regarding the grants. So if you'll recall, on January 5th, this grant program was approved by council with $500,000 in funding. We subsequently had a conversation with the Louisville Revitalization Commission, and they agreed to participate in funding up to $150,000. So that made the split approximately $350,000 from the City's General Fund and $150,000 from the LRC. Unfortunately, the program was open for the anticipated period of time, and we only received 66 applications. Positively, almost all of those applicants were eligible. So we had a much smaller number of ineligible applicants than we did from our Emergency Solutions Grant Program in April of last year. On the screen, you'll see we had 66 applications received, 59 of those currently determined to be eligible. I've provided the breakout based on the eligible business types we had in the program, but based on the number of applicants, we didn't really have to do any of the prioritization that we sort of anticipated doing. We did have the most number of restaurants and bars receive funding, but we did also have, and I'm sorry, I've actually mixed up the numbers now that I'm looking at this table I put together this afternoon. The 18 and the 5 should be reversed. So we had five gyms and fitness providers receive funding and 18 limited health service providers. And that limited health service providers was a group that really hadn't received as much of our grant funding previously because of how things were prioritized. Of the 59 applications, 31 were in the urban renewal area and 28 were outside. And then I just have this brief breakdown on the seven ineligible applications. Like I said, this was a very small number of people. Mostly, they were not an eligible business type. So all of those applicants that were not eligible will receive a denial and the reasoning why. And just to give you a sense of totality, with these 59 grants that we're currently working on, the check requests and getting those approvals out to people, the city will have funded 161 grants in total. And I just wanted to show you the spread that there are 15 businesses that have received grants in each of our programs. There are 23 businesses that have received grants from two of the programs, and that was predominantly people received an Emergency Solutions Grant and now a Small Business Preservation Grant. And then, because in this program, we had, we did have a number of businesses that had not received a grant from us previously. So it did reach some businesses that had, had previously not received funding. As noted, we're focused on getting the funding out the door, but I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much for that quick update. Any, any brief questions? It's not on the agenda, so we'll just make sure we stay with questions and don't get into a council debate. Mayor Portemaloni?
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Director Pierce, for that report. I'm a little surprised by the, the number 59. I thought we would be up near 100, but it is what it is. The question I have is the split of funding between the general fund and the urban renewal area. How do you propose doing that?
So...
Mayor, did you want to ask?
I just think that's a great thing for the EBC to take up, is to discuss the different options and then determine what the best path forward is.
Okay. Well, I think that's an appropriate thing. So that's, that's my question, and I will leave it to the EBC discussion.
Any other questions? Great. So that takes us to our next order of business, which is our first item of regular business, and that's a Boulder County Public Health COVID-19 update. I'm gonna turn it over to our city manager really quickly to introduce our special guest this evening. City Manager Bolser?
Yeah. Good evening. So we have a couple folks from Boulder County Public Health. We're always so glad to have, have you here to give us more information on the current events around COVID and vaccination this time as well. So we have Jeff Ziyak, the Boulder County Public Health Director, and then Chris Campbell, who also works for the county. I think he's here to talk about vaccination. That's what I've heard him talk about. And I think, I think that's who we've got, unless, Jeff, we've got anybody else. I'll just hand it over to you. Thank you both.
Well, thank you so much. Appreciate it, Heather, and thanks, Mayor and council members. Always good to be back with you. I think somebody has my slides, so if they can put those up. And what I'm gonna do is just go through maybe 10 minutes, a little less, to give you an update on the data. And then we'll jump right into the vaccinations, which I know that is really what people want to hear about. So, and the overall message here is that our data is looking good. We were very concerned about what our data was gonna look like going through, especially the Christmas and New Year holiday because of the mobility data we were seeing at the state. But we've actually had just a small spike, so I'll go through that. So next slide, please. This is the dial data, and I, I know you're all very familiar with this. We are in orange right now. You can see that our cumulative incidence rate is now just below 350, which is where we moved from orange to red in terms of that indicator. Last week, when I was presenting this data, I believe it was around 300, it was a little over 350. So our numbers are coming down. They're headed in the right direction. That is the only indicator that's pushing the red incidence, which is severe at this point, and we do expect those to continue to come down. Next slide, please. This is the metro data. You can see that we had that little spike. I'm very, Denver's was a little more than little, but I'm glad that they're all headed back down in the, in the right direction. Most of what you're seeing there is associated with Christmas and New Year's. We are definitely beyond the date now. About 15th or 16th of January is when we were expecting to see the picture of what would happen around New Year's. So I think we've seen it, and we are headed in the right direction. This is the place to say thank you to all of our residents, everybody who is here, who's following those precautions. This is why we've, we've done better than other states and other nations across the world. So I just want to thank everybody for taking this seriously. Boulder County, which is in the red, continues to be very low, and that is because of all the really hard sacrifices people have made. Next slide. This is our numbers, and the orange on here is the number of cases associated with long-term care facilities. And we have, as you all know, long-term care facilities have been a challenge because there is, there were so many folks that were bringing in, they're asymptomatic, that were staff that were coming in. Most of these facilities don't have the resources or the testing ability to test on a daily basis. So that has been one of the challenges that we've had throughout this later outbreak in the fall. But that is, those cases are starting to decrease as are our general cases. Next slide. This is our five-day average of cases. We're in, we're at 71, so we're back in the numbers where we can start to manage all of our contact tracing and case investigations. This is really great news. Again, we want this, this to continue downward as we get vaccine out into the community. Next slide. This is the number of cases from across the different municipalities. You can see that Longmont and Boulder are the major contributors, followed by a combination of Lafayette, Louisville, and Superior, which are much smaller, and then finally unincorporated. Next slide. This is our, this is our two-week incidence rate by age group. You can see that they have mostly flattened. We have a few age groups that are going up and then coming back down, but for the most part, our, our age groups are stabilized, and that's reflected in our overall numbers. Next slide. This is the number of Boulder County residents who are newly reported as testing positive or probable by race and ethnicity. You can see that there was a very large contribution from Latinx population, and that is because of the, the challenges we have associated with access to care for this population. We've been working hard on this and have hired resource coordinators who are working with our, our folks in our communities, our cultural brokers, and we're trying to make sure that the access to these communities is, is done in a way that works best for them specifically. And we are starting to see some of those changes occur. Next slide. This is the, the cumulative case rate per 100,000 since the beginning of November. So you can again see the contributions relative to each of our cities. Longmont has continued to sort of be the highest number there. The only time that that really shifted was when we had the large outbreak with the city of Boulder, in the city of Boulder, when the University of Colorado students came back in early August. Next slide. This is our percent positivity. We are staying below 5% and have since about, oh, the, the, towards the middle of December there. And that is where we want to stay if we're testing an adequate number of people and our positivity rate's below 5%. It means we're doing enough testing in our community to adequately identify where the virus is and being able to control that. And message here for folks is we have plenty of adequate testing in our county. If you just go to Boulder County Public Health COVID-19 data and then click on testing, it'll give you the locations of the testing sites, whether they're free or not, what the hours and locations are, and it's, we do have ample testing capacity. So please do take, take advantage of the testing. You do not have to be symptomatic to get tested. And part of that is because we know that 50, roughly 50% of the people that have the disease don't even realize that they have it. Next slide. This is our hospitalizations in Boulder County. You can see that we've been on a pretty steady decline. We've got a little tail up there at the end, but we do expect, because of our case rates, that this will also continue to decline, as should our deaths, which are the indicator that follows hospitalizations. Next slide. This is the state hospitalization, same trend. Next slide. And this is our deaths. Again, you can see the, the contribution associated with long-term care facilities. These are the most, these are the, these are our eldest folks who are the, the most sensitive and impacted by this disease, and that, that's clearly evident here in the number of deaths that we've had from long-term care facilities, especially in the second half of this outbreak. Next slide. And what I want to illustrate here is the importance of masks. So the purple line that's on the bottom, comparative to that blue line, which I know is a little hard to see because it's mixing with other lines, the blue line is, is getting vaccine out rapidly to our high-risk population. And you can see the purple line, which is the use of masks at 95%. The state of Colorado is around 75%. At a 95% masking rate, you can see the contribution from masks relative to preventing daily infections as well as daily deaths. So masks can make a huge difference. That's the message I really want folks to hear. Lot more research now on it, a lot more evidence, and we can do a lot by just masking between now and the time that we really have a lot of vaccine out and circulating in our community towards the end of the summer, early part of the fall. And I think I just have one more slide, or I think the next slide is Chris, actually. Can you just see if there's one more after that? Can't remember, sorry. That's it. All right. So at this point, I will turn it over to Chris Campbell, who I know has another set of slides. And Chris is our, our emergency manager for Boulder County, and he is also the one who's in charge of helping implement our vaccination plan, which is a monumental task that he will tell you about. So I'll turn it over to Chris. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff, and good evening, council members. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening to, to the community members joining us this evening. Thanks so much for having, allowing me to present this evening. Again, my name's Chris Campbell. I am the emergency manager with Boulder County Public Health, working with an incredible team to work on our vaccination administration, administration in Boulder County. And I, I would be remiss not to thank that team for the work they've done thus far, and provide an update this evening to all, to talk about our administrative vaccine plan for Boulder County. Next slide, please. So a couple things we want to highlight for both the council and, and community members this evening. So we do want to really be clear about the limited vaccine availability and allocation currently, give a clear picture of what we're receiving in the state of Colorado and ultimately in Boulder County, and then really give an update to the community members and council on our current planning and implementation, and really focus on our collaboration, which has been remarkable, with the providers, the hospitals, all, all our partners that are currently providing vaccine and running clinics in the county. Next slide, please. So maybe you might have seen, so this slide represents the phase plan for the state of Colorado. There's a couple points I really wanna, wanted to make here with, with the community members and council. One, this is a, this is a plan that the state health department along with the governor's office really is, is requiring that providers follow. So as a public health agency, as a vaccine provider in the community, we are following this phase plan. A couple things around this as well. So we are making very good progress in our 1A. So there's our highest health, highest risk healthcare workers, we're just about done with that group. We're also long-term care facility staff and residents additionally are receiving vaccine. This is through the National Pharmacy Partnership. So we have about 40 long-term care facilities in our, in our county, and they're being vaccinated by Walgreens or CVS through the National Pharmacy Partnership. Just to be clear, the community, this has been a bit of a solo rollout, but we do know that all facilities are all, all facilities in the county that qualify for this program have been connected with a pharmacy. They have scheduled their clinics, and they've started vaccinating and have had good, a good experience with that. So we're excited that that group is being worked through. Additionally, we are working with all of our partners, I'll discuss here in a bit, for those in Phase 1B. And as you may know, we've worked, you know, with frontline healthcare workers, additional healthcare workers, and ultimately, we're starting to move into vaccinate community members that are 70 or older. I want to be very clear here, you can't see, there's a dotted line. So groups below that, this includes teachers, workers in education. This is a very large group. They, we are not going to be moving to that group until we have completed these phases in the box here. So I just want to be very clear with the community about that, and I'll talk a little bit more about where we're at with that group. Next slide. And this is a slide that we have shared with community members since we've started talking about our planning efforts. And I just want to reiterate how the rollout was expected to go. We're really in this phase of very constrained and limited supply with vaccines. So just to paint a picture, this last week, the state received just over 60,000 doses of both vaccines. So it's about 30,000 doses of the Pfizer vaccine, about 30,000 doses of the Moderna vaccine statewide. 20,000 of those doses are going to this, to the long-term care pharmacy partnership. So that leaves about 40,000 doses for the entire state. It's not a big number. What we do know is, once we, in the next couple weeks, as the pharmacy partnership and long-term care facility residents and staff are vaccinated, we're gonna see about a consistent statewide allocation, about 70,000 doses on a weekly basis. So we'll have, we have a next slide here that I'll get to, just to paint that picture a bit more. I think the message here for community members, and Megan, if you go back to the last one, I think the message here for community members is, you know, again, we knew this was gonna be pretty constrained, and the rollout would have to match that, and it's just gonna take a little while to get vaccine to community members. Ultimately, anticipate, particularly as additional vaccine candidates come onboard, and we're likely gonna see additional immune use authorizations for the Janssen-Johnson-Johnson vaccine, for example. That supply is gonna go up, and I'll talk a little bit more about how prepared we are for that. I will say, and I really want to reiterate for mayor and council and community members, we are ready to go. We have a capacity right now this week of, the capacity to do about 20,000 vaccines on a weekly basis. And our allocation to our providers this week is about 3,500 doses. So a little frustrating, and, you know, we have providers onboard that are ready to go. We know our hospital systems are ready to double their efforts and get additional vaccine out. So that's currently where we're at with, with that vaccine supply. Next slide, please. This slide's a little bit dated, but we, it's just painting a picture a bit more of the vaccine allocation. So these are statewide numbers, about 108,700 Coloradans and community members in that Phase 1A. As you move in the Phase 1B, and this includes the group below, the frontline essential workers below that dotted line, is about 1.3 million Coloradans. These numbers, again, are a little bit dated, but we have seen that they were, basically the statewide allocation has been a little bit higher than that, you know, but about 300,000 doses. So in order to make these numbers, we're just gonna have to significantly increase and improve our allocation to the state. So again, the message to community members, I know is challenging. We anticipate additional vaccine arriving in the weeks and months to come. Right now, we're just in that constrained environment, and we will, you know, we are ready to go as additional vaccine comes out. And we'll talk a little bit more about some of those strategies as well. Next slide, please. This is just an update on the statewide numbers. So about 278,000 Coloradans have been vaccinated, community members. The important numbers you see there is those numbers are starting to move up, about 50,000 that received that full course. So the numbers on a weekly basis are going up. Next slide, please. In Boulder County, as of, as of this morning, we have vaccinated almost 17,000 community members, and we are rolling into that second force in, in dosages as well, and that's about 2,500 community members. Next slide, please. The reason we want to show this, this is showing our week in, week out, numbers of the number of community members we're vaccinating. Again, we anticipate this going up. We did want to show the steady increase of vaccines getting out to Boulder County community members, and those numbers on a daily basis becoming higher and, and, you know, again, what we hope to see is even much higher numbers here and a significant increase. Next slide. This is just to talk a little bit more about our providers in the county, and I really wanted to make sure I mentioned and thank all the partners and those that have stepped up. So all five hospitals in the county are currently providers, are federally qualified health centers, so clinical and salute additionally are vaccinating community members. We are working with pharmacies, so Safeway Pharmacy and King Supers pharmacies are pharmacies that are providers, and we're working with to vaccinate community members. Additionally, Boulder County Public Health has been holding vaccine clinics twice a week, and those are, again, focused on these phases that we're talking about with community members. We are, again, really looking to push, push up that, that administration on a week in and week out basis. So these providers, again, we meet with on a, on a weekly basis, and we look at the vaccine allocation for the community. We look at which community members need to be vaccinated. We still have a few in the 1A and 1B categories that we're looking to match to providers like the pharmacies. And additionally, you'll see from us tomorrow some clear messaging and a website on how community members that are in, that are 70+ can reach out to the hospitals and the clinics to start to get signed up for vaccines. And next slide, please. As we look to those next phases, particularly this very large group of frontline essential workers, we have, we continue to work on plans for larger-scale points of dispensing. So these could be, for example, at the Boulder County Fairgrounds. These could be at other private sites or other governmental sites. We are working on a partnership with the hospital systems to do pop-up sites, and these are for those community members that would be challenged with transportation issues to access large-scale points of dispensing, for example, or even to go into the hospitals. So that is a model we know that a hospital has worked with, and we discussed with today that they've done in other counties. We're looking to ramp that up very quickly. And additionally, strike teams, these are teams that could go out to a location, identify the location, and, and bring vaccine to community members. Jeff did mention, and we want to continue to mention, all this is being done with the health equity and racial equity lens. So we have, we are working with a cultural broker that has joined us as a staff member. Our health equity coordinator is in form or planning the whole way that we've, that we've started blowing out our vaccination administration plan. So our goal truly is, is to work with partners, make, remove any barriers that are out there. We are working on, additionally, we'll have campaigns out talking about vaccine hesitancy, why it's Why it's important to get a vaccine, answer questions that the community members have around the vaccine. So those are all plans that'll be coming in the, in the weeks and days to come, in the months to come. And next slide, please. We still, we still are asking community members, if they'd like, they can be notified when, when vaccine is available to them. And so we, we have a couple of places you can sign up on our website to do that. There's additional information on our website to, to learn about the vaccine, to learn about your options, to understand the phasing plan. So that is also up on our website. And next slide. I just want to reiterate Jeff's message and then I'd be happy to answer any questions that the group has. You know, again, we, you know, want to, we would encourage folks to continue doing the things we know that work to protect community members. So again, it's all these, all the things that basically got into us a good place and allow us to get additional vaccine now. Wearing masks, no large social gatherings, you know, social distancing when possible. We still would ask, encourage folks to, to sign up to add your phone. And that's a potential, the notification app that folks could access. And we will work as hard as we possibly can and are doing that on a daily basis to get as much vaccine out to the community as possible. So thanks so much for your time and I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council or community members have.
Thank you to Jeff and Chris for coming and giving that update. You know, we appreciate the partnership that we have with Boulder County Public Health. The, a few times, Chris, I nearly jumped through the screen while you were talking. And so I'm trying to stay very calm. But I, I feel like the frustration I've been hearing from community members is not with the fact that the vaccine is in limited doses and slow to roll out. I think people are very understanding of that and very understanding of the fact that, you know, we can only give as many shots as vaccine we have available. So you gotta wait your turn. And that's an easy message for me to convey and my mayor's message and for council members to use their platforms to convey that message. I think the frustration that people have is that because the vaccine has been distributed to all of these different points of contact, that there is not one place to sign up to be vaccinated and get in that queue. And so that is the frustration. And then there's also mixed messaging around, you know, you hear on the news or the television that you don't need an ID or that the vaccine will be free. And then, of course, that's not the case. You, you need insurance, you need to have an ID. It's impossible right now for someone without insurance to sign up. Like I've tried to help two people. It's, it's for seventy, seventy in Boulder County without insurance, it's next to impossible. So once the county has your site set up for, for people, I, I think that'll be resolved. But the problem is not that people are impatient. The problem is that the way that we've decided that people are going to sign up is that they have to sign up on ten platforms and then see which one contacts them first and then delete their sign up on the other ones. And that is very frustrating to people. So I'm hopeful that, that county health can correct that as quickly as possible. And hopefully, you know, I, I know the seventy and up, we've got to do it as fast as we can. There's going to be bumps along the way. We can communicate to people that and try to get through the frustration. But as we move along to more and more and more of the general public, I would hope this is not our approach. Like if we could just say, everybody in Lewisville, sign up here, here's where you're going to go. Everybody in East County, sign up here, everybody in Longmont, sign up here. The idea that people are going to sign up on Safeway and King Supers and UC Health and Centura and Boulder County Health and then wait to see which one calls them is really frustrating to people. So if we can do anything to fix that, I would be really appreciative. And I know you guys have done a ton and I know this is crazy. And so I hope my comments come across as suggestive and supportive and like, I, I know you guys are doing so much and on a short, short timeline. But I hope we can address that. Kyle, Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. I have some questions specific to, to our community. You mentioned the partnership between Walgreens and CVS for the long-term care facilities. How, and you've also mentioned that it was, that it's been slower to roll out. How many of our long-term care facilities in Colorado or in Lewisville have, have, have received vaccines? And how many residents in those facilities?
Yeah, thank you for that question. I'd have to follow up and get you an answer to that. I don't, I don't have that this evening.
Okay. Yeah, please do. I think it's, I think it's really important. As you mentioned, and as Director Zayac mentioned, you know, that's where the deaths from COVID are coming from. And, you know, we need to get those, those vaccines out as quickly as possible. I wanted to ask, you know, I think to the mayor's point, it's very frustrating for us as a, as a municipality to have our constituents coming at us needing help, wanting to sign up and do whatever is appropriate and would be willing to wait in line. But not really knowing as a municipality exactly how we can work with you in the best way. I know that our staffs work together and I appreciate that very much. But where, how can we augment your efforts, especially as, as these, as vaccine supply gets better? You know, is it, you know, where, where will the opportunities for us as a municipality be to try to, to, to take some of this on?
Yeah, Jeff, I don't know if you want to weigh in as well, but, you know, I think it's a good question. And, and we have been working with an agency administrator group, you know, to ensure coordination and message sharing. So I would just mention, I appreciate the feedback on the sign up and acknowledge that. And, you know, we are looking to rectify that and really work up on, work on a clear process. One for notification, one for, for sign up. When you're available, what's the best way to sign up instead of having, going to multiple locations to do that? And I know that's been frustrating for community members, so I'll acknowledge that. I would also mention, you know, we know community members, you know, have, you know, have access issues if they are unable to, unable to, to join online. And that's been a challenge. So we're working with 211 and just, you know, a place to call and help community members sign up. And there should be more than that in the next couple of weeks for community members to sign up. You know, for me, it's, you know, it's, it's important for us to continue to work as staff and get you the tools you need to communicate with constituents. So I think our websites, you know, pointing to our website, clear information is going to be helpful for community members. That is one suggestion I have. Jeff, I don't know if you have anything to add to that, but.
The only other things I would add, and Councilmember Brown and Mayor Stoltzman, to your points, we're working on a weekly basis. We meet with all our providers to try to get to the place that you described that you'd like to see. We also would like to see that as well. So that's been the purpose of that meeting. We're not there yet. There is some things that need to happen at the state level in order for us to get there. So we're just not quite there yet. But when we get to larger distribution sites, we may be asking you for support for space, as an example. Absolutely, communication is going to be really important. So our GUS is connected and all of our PRAOs are working together. But the messaging piece is going to be obviously really important. And all of us are getting a lot of calls on this right now. And I know the communication can be improved and we're working on that. But when we get to that point where we can have a more streamlined registration, the communication aspect will be really important.
If there's something we can do to help get the state to move as well, don't forget that we're happy to help if we can. Councilmember Fagie?
Thank you, Mayor. My question is, I'm hoping a little simpler than the previous two. I noticed in, in Phase 1B that one of the groups that's added is educators. That's a very broad category. And I'm wondering if that includes all grade levels or, you know, preschool through university level? Or if there's a specific range of grades where the educators are going to be covered?
Thank you again for the question. So it's our understanding, we're, we're still seeking clarity on that phase as well. So we've, we've had the same questions. We, we definitely believe that our early childhood educators should absolutely be included in that group. You know, along with higher education, you know, we've had, you know, universities and schools, higher ed and the community asking about that as well. You know, it's, it's our understanding, we're, we're reading that it's, it's broad that way, which is why that, that group is so big. So we would include all those as our understanding right now. But we're still seeking some clarity from the state on it. And we've asked very question, that very, those very questions several times.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Lipton? You're on mute.
I'm sorry, just unmuted and muted. I just want to express our appreciation, Jeff and Chris, for everything you guys have been doing. It's, it's been awesome and very difficult effort over the past year. And there's no playbook for this. And I guess you're writing the playbook now, perhaps for the next pandemic, hopefully we won't have to use it. But anyway, I, I realize all the challenges you have. One, one of the things you didn't mention tonight that I think would be informative to people listening is what the allocation of vaccine process is from the national to the state? And then within the state to the counties? Is it just based on population or is there some other algorithm involved? And I think that would be good for people to hear and better understand.
Yeah, and great question and thank you. So, you know, my, my understanding of, I can talk a little bit, Jeff, you might be able to talk a little more to the national allocation. I can talk about the statewide allocation and how that initially rolled out. So what I do know is when we first received vaccine very early on, the state made some decisions just based on how much, how limited the vaccine was to send some vaccine to rural counties. And so that took away vaccine allocation from the more populous counties. And so that's how initially how things were rolled out with me. So it really wasn't done based on population initially. And we're, we're still looking at, things are starting to balance now. And so the, you know, the, we, what we have seen is some of the more rural counties in the state are through their, through their groups because they have much less, they have much less community members living there. And the larger metro areas are still working through their groups. And they are starting to see, they're starting to shift the vaccine allocation from the state there. Starting, just to be clear, and starting, my understanding is next couple of weeks, we'll be able to actually put in a request for allocation. Currently, and it's just shifting, the state was basically just pushing out allocation kind of based on the need they were seeing. How many, where providers were, where providers were needing vaccine along with some requests. But just last week, we put in a request for the county. And the majority of that request wasn't filled, unfortunately. So we, you know, that's the, we're getting a better, better picture of kind of that statewide allocation. And we're going to keep working with our partners to, you know, to decide how that is distributed throughout the county with those providers, given the groups that we need to vaccinate left in the county in these phases.
Chris, was there any explanation to why Boulder didn't receive its allocation based on population?
I just maybe clarify that question for me.
Was there, was there any explanation why Boulder County did not receive the requested amount?
Yeah, no, my understanding, yeah. My understanding was, again, there's anticipation for potentially more vaccine that was going to come on a national level, which didn't come to fruition. And so, you know, we were just, we were putting what we thought, you know, again, we had the capacity built. And we're really excited to ramp up that allocation in the community. And, you know, there, there wasn't a lot of transparency around it. We just, you know, we talked with our providers, some said they got zero vaccine. They put in requests, some of the pharmacies in the county, only some of them got the vaccine allocation they requested. So yeah, it's, I, I haven't seen an explanation yet.
Thank you.
I can, I can add some to that if you'd like as well.
Sure, good, thanks.
A couple of things. One is, at the national level, we've been, the state's been having the same struggles that we're having at the local level. So there hasn't been a lot of good, consistent information in terms of what we're going to get for vaccines. The state is banked on, as I think you've all heard, sixty thousand doses per week. Some weeks we get sixty thousand doses, some weeks we don't. And there's really no way to tell except for a few days before. So it's the same disconnect in communication, I think, is happening at the national level. And you've seen the changes recently about we thought, people thought there were second doses. Now there's not second doses. So there's been a lot of information and miscommunication that I think has been a challenge for all of us, both at the state as well as at the local level. I can tell you that we are meeting with our providers because there are some hospital systems that want their distributions to go to their central office. And then they distribute to their local hospitals based on need. So we, if we don't coordinate with them, we have no way of knowing how that allocation is occurring. So that's part of the reason why we have to meet on a weekly basis to try to make sure we're all aware of who has what. And we're starting to get more transparency now. We can see where allocations have been made from the state, but that has only recently happened. So again, what you are exactly right when you said we are, we are building this plane as well. I don't remember the metaphor, but building the plane as we're, as we're flying it. And we're going to continue to get better coordination and increase communication, but, but that's happening week to week.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Obviously, thanks to Chris and Jeff for everything you guys are doing. So none of my, none of my critiques, Director, the two of you. I agree with a lot of the comments the, the mayor made and, and, and just a few thoughts that, you know, so what I think, obviously playbook can be written for, for vaccine distribution before it's needed. And I'm disappointed that our national federal system has let the state and local entities down in, in, in planning. One of the good news, bad news moments for me is that we have a lot of time to do this better over the next six months. Like, we're not going to be done with this next month. So, you know, I really, I really hope that we are spending time in these next couple of months to make the entire process better. But, you know, the, I think one of the main issues that I want to bring up and understand and hopefully get some answers on is the issues around, you know, equity and, and getting, getting the vaccine distributed in a way that's, that's equitable and also deals with people who are disproportionately affected. When I look through the list, I don't see any prioritization of people who are disproportionately dying from COVID. So when I go through the list and it's frontline this and frontline that and continuity of state workers and essential frontline journalists and sixty-year-olds, I don't once read anything that says anything about prioritizing people who are dying at a higher rate because of their ethnicity. And in Boulder County, it's, it's substantial. We have a thirteen percent population of Hispanics and they're dying at an eighteen percent rate. So it's disproportionate and I don't see anything in here. And then to the mayor's point of the difficulty in figuring out the system, it's another layer of inequity that I can call all my nurse friends and find out who's got, who's got the vaccine? And how can my dad get it or how can my aunt get it or how can my friend get it? But that takes time, that takes effort, that takes resources. And so you're asking people, not you, we are asking people to investigate and discover a path to a vaccine. And there's nothing in here that just categorically helps them. So we don't seem to be doing anything for them structurally. And we're failing our population in general in, in access and continuity of access. So I, I'm just trying to understand. All that comment is just prelude to what are we actually doing to help our communities of color who are disproportionately affected by this disease get a vaccine faster?
Hey, Chris, is it okay if I take a stab at this first? I have to jump after I answer this to Longmont City Council, but Chris will be on here. And he can add to what I'm about to say, but I do want to let you know that you're absolutely right on track. So most of where we see that happening is in Phase 1. So most of where we see that happening is in phase two, which is that lower portion or in phase, the lower portion of phase one be below the line. We have, as a Metro Denver Partnership for Health, which is that group that I presented that second slide on, we have submitted a letter to the governor's office requesting the equity, equity be prioritized. The governor is going to meet with some of us on Friday to talk some more about that. I know the city of Boulder has submitted a letter. We endorse that letter as well. So I think that is a part of the process that needs to be figured out. How does that actually fit? Because you're, you're absolutely right. We know that we have, we have higher impacts in those populations. If you look at both the, the number of cases per population as well as the deaths in, in those populations in our community, we see that there's an improportional, that's not the right word.
Disproportionate.
Is a, yeah, yeah, disproportionate impact in those populations. So we see that as well. We've made that request and we'll see how that goes. One of the things that Chris said that I think is really important for everybody to hear is that the governor has made it really clear that we have to follow that phasing. And if we don't follow the phasing and we go outside of it, not just us, but any provider, then they can lose their, their providers, their ability to provide the vaccine. So they've been pretty clear with us. They've asked for people to be, to be identified that aren't following it. And there's, there's a positive and a negative for that. The positive is we're making sure we're vaccinating the higher, the highest impact people first. Seventy, eighty percent of the people that die in the state are dying in that one A, one B, or that one, really, it's the one A phase. And the, and the over 70 population. So I just wanted to make sure everybody hears that and knows that. So we only have, we've been advocating for multiple pieces, but we do have to follow what the state is putting down in guidance. And I'm sorry, I have to jump.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Jeff, for coming. We really appreciate the update and everything that your team has been working on. So thank you so much. And Chris, you're going to stick with us for a minute?
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, I thought I saw one more hand up. I think Councilmember Ron had one follow-up question.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I had one question, which is, Director Zach mentioned that, you know, we're going to be in this for the long haul, right? That just because vaccine is available doesn't mean that we stop wearing our masks or stop socially distancing. And that testing is really important, an important part of that. Can you, can you tell us where the state and the Boulder County Public Health have worked together to set up some free testing sites? Where is the nearest one for Louisville residents in case they haven't discovered it yet?
Yeah, so thank you. And I, there's, there's several options. And I believe there's a new option through what's called COVID Check Colorado. That's in Lafayette, but it's, it's very close to Louisville. So that's one free option. And that's on our bouldercounty.org website. If you look up all the testing sites. Yeah, additional free testing sites include Estasio Ballfields in Boulder and then the Longmont Fairgrounds, which, you know, are a bit of a drive, but those are, those are our closest free testing sites right now. We worked really hard to kind of clean up those processes. They should be easy in, in, in English or Spanish to sign up for those testing sites. And result turnarounds have gotten much better there. So those are sites that are available currently and they are on our website.
Thank you, Chris.
Absolutely.
All right. Any other questions on this? We'll go to the members of the public and ask if any members of the public have any questions or would care to comment on this agenda item. If you failed in by phone, you can dial star nine to raise your hand. And if you've used your computer, there's a raise hand feature at the bottom of the panel. All right, thank you. Seeing that, that takes us back over. Any, any closing remarks for us, Chris, or any other council members?
Yeah, I just want to thank you all. And I really appreciate the feedback and the guidance. And we see this as a partnership. So we'd love to come back again and share an update. And hopefully we can share some positive news on, on some of the things you share with us. So again, thanks so much. And we really appreciate it. We'll take care.
Yeah, thank you, Chris. We really want to thank you for coming and giving us the update. I think you're the most popular person in Boulder County right now. Everybody wants to have a meeting with you. So we thank you for spending some extra time with us. And there is a lot to be really hopeful for the Boulder County update that got sent out today. Said about a third of the people over 70 have gotten their first vaccination so far. So that is awesome. And so, I mean, we're making good progress. We have some work to do, but we can learn from where we've come and, and it's only going to get better. And so thanks for what you're working on and working through all of the struggles that you're, you're addressing.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you, everybody. That takes us to our next agenda item this evening. Our next agenda item is Regional Transportation District Update. So we are very lucky this evening to have two special guests. Our very own Director Lynn Geisinger is our district O rep, who does a fantastic job for us. We've all met Lynn before. We're just so, so glad you could be here, Lynn. And in case people hadn't heard, members of the public and council members, Lynn is now the, I was going to say Vice President.
Vice Chair.
Vice Chair of RTD. So that's a pretty big deal to have our rep get that position of honor. And it just means that she works really well with everybody else at the district. So that's great news for us. And Lynn is going to introduce us to the newest director, Eric Davidson. So I'll turn it over to you, Lynn, for an update and let us know how it's going.
Thank you very much, Mayor Stolzmann. And thank you all for having us. We've been talking with several city councils. We just got off with, with Boulder tonight. We met with Longmont last week with Northwest Chamber also last week. And it's, it's a big help. It's great to stay in touch and also just in the future, as you think of things, we're, we're always looking for your feedback. We, we're like legislators when we're on the RTV board. We, we wear both hats that we're working for the best of the district as a whole, and we're working for our constituents. There are 15 directors. We each have, I think, over 200,000 constituents. So it's a big area. It's about a three, three million person district. I am the director for all of Louisville, I believe. It's Megan Davis and I were looking at it today. And it kind of goes around the edge. And I represent basically Western Boulder County, Boulder, Louisville, little bit of Southwest Longmont, Superior, Nederland Lions, all of that area and areas that are unincorporated. And Eric can tell you more about his, his area, but Eric represents District I, which starts basically at the edge of town. And, and he represents Lafayette, Longmont, Brimfield and Eastern Boulder County. And already Eric's only been on for a couple of weeks on the board, but already we're working very closely together. Just like the Northwest Mayors and Commissioners and all the, all the groups up here that have been so effective working on transportation issues. We feel like we will be working as a team for the Northwest Corridor and for all of, all of you. You know, I just would start by saying that I feel very lucky in this area to have staff and, and elected officials that are so attuned to transportation issues. And yours here in Louisville are certainly a big piece of that. Works closely with your staff. And I always enjoy talking to Mayor Stolzmann. We have, I learn lots. I think she's more engaged on transportation issues than, than many people around the district. And so that's, that's been great. The, I'll start with a quick update on COVID. In March, as you may know some of this just from the papers, but in March, we basically lost 75% of our ridership overnight when things shut down. It's a bit better now, but we're still down about 60%. In April, we cut, RTD cut service by about 40%. And then in January, we made some changes to the service to really focus on our current ridership, which is essential workers, transit dependent, you know, people who are, who have stayed with with RTD during this time and, you know, tend not to be the commuters. It used to be that we would have a morning peak when, when ridership was high and an afternoon peak. That's has leveled out. There's just really none of that at this point. So one of the big issues that we're starting to deal with is how to bring ridership back. The, and I'll get back to that a little more. The, the CARES Act and the more recent COVID Act have saved us. RTD would have been, already had financial issues and it really would have been hard to keep running without the CARES Act. CARES Act funding, RTD received $232 million. We were able to keep all of our employees employed last year with that funding. And the more recent bill, COVID Relief Bill, we will receive somewhere around another 200 million. And the purpose of that money is very clearly stated. It's for operations and payroll. It's to keep our employees employed. So, you know, it's a, it's a bit of a balance. We don't, you know, we, we had, we have a lot of empty buses, but we are focusing on the core riders. We're bringing back all, we did lay off people just for a couple of weeks. We're bringing them all back, the frontline workers. And we need more workers on old routes because we've, we've limited the ridership to 15 on the smaller buses, 20 on the larger buses. And so we, we have to have more drivers for that. We have drivers that are on standby. If the buses start to hit more than that number that we can deploy at that point. Overall, I guess my priorities on the board right now, one of the big priorities for all of us is just figuring out ridership, how will we bring ridership back, starting to think through, you know, what, what do we do with fares? With eco passes, all of those things. How do we bring service back? So many of those are staff decisions, but, but certainly the board will be involved with fares. And I think, you know, we have to look seriously at, at other options to make our fares more affordable, to make our passes more affordable and more available to a broader range of people. One of my priorities, and I, we would like to hear your thoughts on any of that tonight or other times. One of my priorities on the board, I've been chairing the Communications and Government Relations Committee. And RTD has developed the reputation that many of you have heard of being the agency of no. It is not considered an agency that is, you know, strong on its partnerships with local governments and innovative. I am more, more optimistic about that right now than I have been at any time on the board. Just in the last two months, we brought on a new general manager, CEO, first woman ever. She's an African-American woman, Deborah Johnson. She's great. I think she's going to do a real good job for us. She came, she was in Washington Metro. She was in leadership positions in, in San Francisco and at LA Metro and other places. So she brings ideas from a lot of places. And I think that she is emphasizing a new flexibility that we haven't had. I've heard that from, from staff members around the county that they're finding a new flexibility with, with staff who say that they're feeling that from the leadership. So that's one of my priorities. I sit on the Accountability Committee, which was appointed last July by the governor and the legislators to try to address some of the problems they were seeing with, with RTD. And they're looking at some things, I think, that, that their ideas are doing a helpful in moving RTD forward in, in addressing some of the issues we need to address too. One of those is our relationship and our partnerships with local governments. They've talked about sort of subregional councils like Dr. Cog has, where local governments have an earlier say in service decisions and more of a say in, in things that affect their area. It's still a, there is a lot of work to be done to, to figure the details on that. But I think that, that our new GM, Deborah Johnson, is open to that. She wants, wants to be working more in partnership. So we're starting, I think, to really start to rebuild some trust with the legislature and state officials and local partners. Of course, one of, one of my priorities is always the NAMs corridors. And that is 119. I know Highway 42 is important in Louisville, that one, Highway 7 and Northwest Rail. There is talk now of, you know, Front Range Rail, Amtrak, there are other possibilities that Northwest Rail might be able to, that RTD might be able to partner with. We'll see if those take off at some point. So I, I will leave it at that and let Eric introduce himself, but we're, we're here to listen. And even after tonight, open to your thoughts of what, how we can help and and what you would like to see from RTD. Thanks.
Thank you, Lynn. Turn it over to you, Eric.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, everybody, to having me here. My name is Eric Davidson. As Lynn mentioned, I am the incoming director for District I, which is in Lafayette, in Brimfield, Longmont, a little bit of Erie that's in the RTD district, some of Thornton and some areas of unincorporated Boulder, Adams and Weld Counties. It's great to be here. It's fun to be here with, with, with you all from Louisville. Maybe it's just an unhealthy addiction to moxie bread, but I am down in Louisville often with my wife. So thank you for the great work you've done to make that, that downtown what it is. I'm really excited and honored to be on the Board of Directors. I think it is an exciting time of change for RTD right now with new leadership, as Lynn mentioned, with our new CEO and general manager, Deborah Johnson, who I think is a very strong CEO. Or whether it's some of our new board members, I think the board last year made some really great steps in the direction of change. So I'm, I'm excited to be joining at this time. Certainly, I'll echo what, what Lynn said. I am, you know, first and foremost here to represent. And so I, you know, our, our districts border each other. You know, Lynn and I are already having the opportunity to work closely together. I want to hear from everybody in and around District I, and then certainly throughout all of RTD. So, so please never hesitate to reach out with ideas, concerns, questions, any, anything of the kind. Some of my early priorities, joining the board, you know, not surprisingly, one of them is, is a culture of partnership. I'd really like to see RTD grow as a partner to our local governments. I've heard many times from constituents even, but particularly from stakeholders in our cities throughout District I, that RTD has a history of just saying what's going to happen. And of course, that's the case. It's not even necessarily a knock against how things have been done or staff. We have 2,300 square miles at RTD, 3 million people. It's hard to do all of that out of a, a single office. So collaborating with local partners and collaborating with private partners are things that I believe are very important. You know, Lynn brought up Northwest Rail. I think that's a perfect example of where, you know, we've gotten ourselves in the situation we're in now at RTD of, of not being able to deliver on that project immediately. And here there are potential partners with Front Range Passenger Rail and Amtrak. There's a role for RTD to play in being a leader in that and embracing partnerships to accomplish our goals. So whether it's something as big and media as that, or, you know, as, as day-to-day as service operations, I, I think we need to be better engaged with our partners. Something I'm also very much interested in is fiscal sustainability and stewardship. Something I often think with transit, there is no end game here. We're not trying to win anything. We need to survive forever, particularly for our full-time riders. And so I think, you know, we, we have some big challenges at RTD that need to be addressed. We need to learn how to do more with the resources we have. And right on the heels of that, something I'm really interested in as we do recover from COVID is, is not just bringing back our riders, but recruiting new ones. And that's something our CEO has been talking a lot about, our board's been talking about. And it's going to require work by everybody. But the more riders we can get involved, the more people we can recruit to be using our transit systems, the stronger the, the whole system will be. And, and, you know, like with a business, I come from the private sector. If you serve your users and you serve your customers and you get more, a lot starts to fall into place. We need to be really serving our riders. We've been reminded during this time that we need to serve our full-time riders in particular, and we need to recruit new ones. And if we can really engage our community, a lot will fall into place. So those are some of the things I'm thinking about. I'm, I'm very excited to be here. It's, it's early days. Thank you for having me. And, and I would certainly welcome any questions and ideas we have here or any other time.
Well, thank you both for the great update. It's just such a huge, challenging, unknown time for, for RTD. COVID has really impacted the way people move around and whether, whether they work from home or, or go back. And we all have so many questions about how or go back. And we all have so many questions about how that will stay the same or change going forward. So it'll be really interesting to continue to hear from you and see how, see how you navigate those uncharted waters. So first commenter question is from Councilmember Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have a question for either Director Geisinger either one of you, actually. You know, you mentioned the sort of how, how do you get riders back? How do you get people to utilize the system again post-COVID? And I think that a lot of that has to do with sort of the feeling of safety probably in these sort of difficult times with COVID. Can you talk a little bit about some of the safety precautions? I think you mentioned it a little bit, Lynn, but some of the safety precautions that, that RTD has put into place to, to help to make sure that, you know, it, it's as safe as it can be to take public transit.
Sure. Thanks for that question. You know, masks are required as they are by the state and, and all of this area. And so that's, that's a big piece of it. We have defined social distancing, 15 people on the smaller buses, 20 on the larger buses like the Flatiron Flyer. I think it's 20 on each of our rail cars and, and we have backup buses, as I mentioned, they, they call it extra board that are waiting. And so if a driver gets to a place where people are wanting to get on and he's, he or she has hit their maximum, they would call somebody out to, to run the rest of the route and, and pick them up. You know, they, they've greatly increased the cleaning. Added staff, again, you know, we're keeping all our staff, so we, we have a lot of people cleaning and disinfecting the buses and put up Plexiglas to protect our drivers between the drivers and the, and people getting on. We did have for a while, just rear door boarding and free fares. We don't have that now now that we've put the Plexiglas in place. But those are some of the things we're doing, you know, the there is, what the press is saying is there, there are really no instances that they can really show of super spreader events on public transportation. At the same time, it's a closed area, you know, it's not, we have to be as careful as we can. I think that RTD has done some work also with the ventilation, keeping things open. And that helps as well.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Councilmember Dickinson.
On that unmute button. Thank you, Mayor. So obviously, there, there seems to be a kind of a chicken and the egg issue with public transit, right? Like if you don't have enough routes, people won't use it. But if people don't use it, you won't give them the routes. And so that's, you know, a tough, a tough pickle. A lot of people from Lewisville feel like the, the, the final mile, the last mile is really difficult in Lewisville. To, you know, my, my wife, before COVID, would take the bus two or three times a week to Aurora. But she always drove to the bus. Never, ever, ever, ever did she take the bus to the bus that would take her to Aurora or back. And we tried lots of different methods. And none of them worked. And so, you know, Lewisville seems to be a small enough community that, you know, we're kind of failing RTD. You know, we don't give the ridership that's necessary to get the routes that we might need to get the ridership that we want. And so I'm just curious, you know, as we get out of COVID and back into quote-unquote, normal times, you know, what is it that we can do as a city to, you know, reengage people as, as you're dealing with, like trying to get ridership up again, right? I mean, obviously ridership is down through no fault, fault of your own. But as we're all trying to get ridership up, I, that's the part I struggle with is trying to explain to one of my employees, I also have an office in downtown Lewisville, and trying to map the transit from their home to my office in downtown Lewisville is an hour instead of 20 minutes because the final mile is so rough. So they don't use it. So then there's no ridership. So then there's no new buses. So is there anything we can do as a community? Business, council members, residents, what can we do as we come out of COVID? To, to increase that, that relationship with RTD for the city of Lewisville? And that's pretty broad and, but.
Eric, I'll let you go first if you'd like.
Sure. Yeah. I mean, I, I would say that this is, you know, not the, the best answer, but I, I think starting the conversation is really important. And I think this is the moment that we're going to be talking about. You know, how to involve local governments more. So you, you know, Lynn has been the expert with the Accountability Committee. And one of the things that's being looked at is creating subregional councils. And again, whether it ends up looking, you know, I don't think anyone knows quite what that's going to look like yet. But I do think that setting up, you know, a more formal structure where local governments are working with RTD on the planning, that, that's part of it. It's just honestly starting that conversation. I, I know that as we look at the mobility hub, that Brimfield is planning at 7:25. That is one of the key issues. It's similar up here in Brimfield. It's quite sprawling and first and last mile is not really well-covered. And so I think, you know, there's no doubt that the cities themselves are going to need to be looking at what they can provide. I think there's some interesting models that Lynn, you could probably speak to much more articulately from Boulder. But I also think that there's things that we can do to blend fares, passes, and develop a partnership between our RTD and the local community. So at this point, I would just say, you know, keep raising that, be part of the conversation. And certainly from my standpoint, I'm a huge advocate that we have some formal structure to have our local cities involved in the planning.
Yeah, I would agree. And I think that when we met with the Northwest Chambers, the leaders of the Northwest Chambers last week, first and final mile is a, is a big issue for a lot of the businesses. And you know, engaging with the businesses on that issue in addition to the city, and, and I appreciate your question from the city point of view, but but the, the businesses, you know, helping to bring that to us. I, I am really hopeful that, that we will, that RTD will come back more in a more innovative way where we're looking at, at different ways to provide service. The Y bus to Lyons, between Lyons and Boulder, was cut when, with the pandemic. It had very low ridership and Boulder County and, and the city of Lyons put in place a taxi voucher program. And in the next coming months, RTD will be sharing the cost of that to, to move that forward. And the hope, I think, is that we would get away from vouchers and back to some sort of set service. So we're, we're not adding more, more cars to the road, but it provides service in that area. And I think that, that those issues are, are coming to the fore much more. Reimagine RTD is going back in. And I think people will be looking at how we provide service to, to, in the first and final mile sort of way. And let's continue the conversation. I agree.
Yeah. And if I may, Councilmember Dickinson, just one other thought, you know, specific thought, a specific example would be, you know, we have the Flex Ride Service at RTD to, to schedule and have these smaller, you know, buses and vans. And I think that's a, a perfect example of where starting a conversation of who covers what and what areas do we focus on? That there may be some really clever things that we can come up with as RTD grows past this phase that we're in right now.
That takes us to the public comment period of this agenda item. If any members of the public care to comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. If you've used your computer to log in, you can raise your hand in the participative panel at the bottom of the screen. If you've dialed it by phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. Seeing no one, that takes us back over to us. And just like to extend our thanks again. This is the first time we've had a good, you know, fun update like this at a council meeting. I know we get to work with you at a lot of the different transportation meetings and we get to see you at the legislative breakfast, but it's really very kind of you to come to one of our council meetings to give an update and let us know how it's going. And so thank you for thinking of us and for doing that and giving us, you know, just the update on how it's going. It's, it's greatly appreciated. So thank you.
Well, thank you so much for having us. And it's great. We would hope to stay in touch.
The final word will go to Councilmember Faiki.
Oh, thank you, Mayor. I just wanted, on a, a far distant, I'm hoping not too distant future, that there could also be a priority with RTD to convert to electric buses.
Thank you. Good final word. Thank you.
I agree.
Yes.
Awesome. All right. So by the end of the year, we'll have that. Great. So that takes us to our next agenda item this evening. But thank you very much. It's Resolution Number Five, Series 2021, a resolution establishing an Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Task Force to provide advisory recommendations to the City Council. We'll have a presentation from our council members who worked on that for us, Councilmembers Lay and Brown. I'll turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mayor. I wanted to start tonight with a quotation and it was, yesterday was Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday and I have a quotation from, from him. "I have almost reached the regrettable conclusion that the Negroes' great stumbling block in the stride toward freedom is not the white citizen's counselor or the Ku Klux Klaner, but the white moderate, who is more devoted to order than to justice, who prefers a negative peace, which is the absence of tension to a positive peace, which is the presence of justice." That's a very powerful reminder, I think, this week of the importance of equity, diversity, inclusion, the EDI. And our efforts, I, I think, need to be framed in terms of long-term change and action. And all of the, the efforts that we've engaged in so far, which I'm going to summarize in just a minute and going to give some background on process and progress. And then we have Councilmember Brown and I have put together a proposal for the council to chew on a little bit based on, on what we've seen and heard and, and discussed. And he's going to go over some of the details. So it's kind of how we're going to, how we're going to go through this, I think. But I think in, in great measure, what we want to do is to keep the conversation that we've started and that has been started nationally, continuing to percolate through our community and to result in some changes that the community is interested in. And we are wanting to be leaders in helping that along to go from the kind of negative piece that we just covered in that quotation to the positive piece that is the harder and heavier lift. In the, the wake of the death of George Floyd and the protests and marches in cities across the country, including Lewisville earlier this year, council expressed a strong interest in addressing community concerns about issues of equity, diversity and inclusion. The council initially tasked Councilmember Dickinson and me to work with city staff to organize meetings in which the council could get some initial input from the community about those issues. And we met quite a number of times. We, along with staff, retained a consultant, Dr. Nita Mosby Tyler, who was just fantastic about how to organize the meetings. And we put together these listening sessions, the goal of which was really to encourage residents, particularly Black residents and other residents of color to discuss their lived experience and suggest some areas of specific concern around EDI issues. Our role was to listen, not to respond at that time, but really to get the input of, of people in the community. And after that was kind of the way that we set that up. Now, she facilitated two of those meetings, one in August, one in September, as you recall, and we conducted those via Zoom. They are available for those who are with us on Zoom or are watching on one of the other means of doing this. Those are recorded. And if you want to tune into those, they're available on the website. But what she did was to, after setting some ground rules and, and defining some terms, which I think is really important in this area to do, she asked some questions and encouraged residents to share experiences, provide some ideas to council and other community members and all of us in council and staff, a great deal, or a great number of staff members attended both of those sessions. The conversations demonstrated to, I think, all of us that there is significant concern, interest on the part of our residents and others to address EDI issues. One of the things that I have really thought about a lot since Dr. Mosby Tyler's facilitation of those meetings is that our goal in the work that we're doing on this isn't to be perfect, but to be excellent. And I think the, not waiting on perfect helps us to not get paralyzed. And being excellent means that we really have to hold ourselves to account and do the very best work that we can on what is a whole series of very difficult conversations, what I think people have called courageous conversations around some of these issues. After our initial conversations in these listening sessions, council wanted to move to the next formulate some next steps, authorized Councilors Brown and, and me to to try to help survey, along with staff, some potential steps forward. And that's kind of where we're at tonight to try to talk about, not the, this is not a process that gets over in six or nine months. This is a very long-term process and we need to, you know, start that, start the journey of a thousand miles with the first steps. So with that in mind, what we, that is Councilmember Brown and I have, have, and are going to propose to you and, and you, you all like to have, obviously, input and find out whether this is something that you think is a good next step. We have the need for a community-based and expert-assisted effort to move from those introductions to those, these courageous conversations. But we have the need to find out what are the most important issues to our community. That this is an effort which has got to be, in some respects, it's driven by the community's concerns. And it needs to, you know, canvas those, the community in order to find out what those issues might be, concerns, ideas, expectations of community members, especially those who are Black, Indigenous, people of color. But also a wider group of people. Uh, but also a wider group of people, uh, 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 black, indigenous, people of color in business or that they operate, that, uh, workers, uh, as well, consumers as well. And what may make our community, um, more welcoming to, uh, people, whatever their backgrounds and what obstacles we face. Um, so what we're proposing is, um, a, a task force, which, uh, Councilmember Brown is gonna talk a little bit more about the details on that. Um, the, our, our focus that, that we've suggested is not so much internal operations of the city. Um, because some of those efforts are already underway, uh, learning and development within the city staff, culture building and integration of some of these EDI concepts. Um, that doesn't mean, of course, that a group from the community isn't gonna have ideas about how we organize ourselves. And it's not a white, bright line between what is internal and what is outward facing. But, uh, Councilmember Brown and I both sort of anticipate that the effort that you all have tasked us to, uh, think about and, and present to you right now is one that is designed to be how the city government interacts with the, the wider community. Um, and, um, so with that, uh, one, one last comment I would make is in the materials, uh, that you, that are in the packet, I think there's a link to, uh, Boulder County's, um, presentation that they did for a, a group of communities and consortium of, uh, cities in Boulder County. And one of the things that they mentioned in that presentation was very powerful to me, which is, uh, they've been doing this for quite some time and they've got seven, I think it's six or seven people on staff in Boulder County to do this work internally alone. And the director of that program said, "If anyone tells you that there is a playbook by which to do this, they're lying to you." Um, which I, given her expertise and knowledge and that she was presenting to us, um, was sobering, but, uh, challenging. And so here's, uh, a little more of, of what, um, what we have at least to propose to you. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Councilmember Lay. I, I really appreciate it. First of all, I want to thank you for your leadership and your passion on this particular issue. I, I mean, we, um, we are fortunate to have you, um, helping to lead us through this. And, uh, I also want to thank Councilmember Dickinson for, for his work in helping to, to lay the foundation on which we were able to, to work. Um, I think, you know, so Councilmember Lay outlined this basic concept of a task force uh, that would continue for a limited period of time. Uh, and you, you can see that reflected in, in the packet. Um, so we were, we had talked, uh, uh, Councilmember Lay and I had talked about, uh, a, a task force that was sort of limited in, uh, in scope and in time, so that we could really formalize many of the conversations. Uh, and the, um, yeah, many of the conversations, I would say, that, that we, we just, we had in the community back in, back in, uh, earlier in, uh, twenty twenty, uh, to really formalize those conversations into some meaningful, uh, and actionable recommendations that the Council could take, um, to make sure that, you know, uh, Louisville is the best place to live and work for everyone regardless of, of, you know, their, their racial or ethnic background to, and, and really to be proactive in our ability to, um, be an, uh, uh, an equity, uh, driven community, if you will. So, you know, I think, I think that's, so that was why we landed on sort of this task force concept, um, and, and try to put kind of a limited timeframe on it. Um, I want to mention just a little bit about sort of who, the, the scope of the, of the task force, um, which is, as I mentioned, sort of, uh, making, uh, you know, examining how Louisville can be a more welcoming place for black indigenous and people of color to live, visit, work, shop, use city services, et cetera. Um, and, you know, we specifically call out, um, particular issue areas that the, the task force may want to consider, such as land use, transportation, and then business-related issues such as attraction, development, um, and retention of BIPOC owners, um, and procurement and patronage of our businesses. So, you know, those are, those are some suggestions. And then, you know, the, the task force obviously would, would be able to identify, uh, additional areas that they might want to. Um, the, the task force itself would be tasked with gathering additional community input through public processes like meetings and then developing written recommendations, uh, regarding how to make Louisville, uh, a more welcoming place for BIPOC, um, to live and work. Uh, and specifically, we're asking them to come up with four to five areas of concern, um, about EDI, um, within, within the city government. Um, and then sort of the goals and objectives that the city should seek to achieve. Um, and then what, maybe some suggestions about what tactics we might use in order to achieve those. So that's really the charge. Um, and then, you know, who, who serves on, uh, a task force like this? Um, you know, it's, it's, it's sort of a unique animal, something that we don't do, I, I don't think, very typically here in Louisville, which is have sort of a, a, a time-limited task force. But it would really, in, in many ways, the selection would be similar to some of our boards and commissions in that they would be appointed by, uh, Council itself, but based on the recommendation of the, um, you know, sort of a selection committee, which would be, uh, really driven by our, um, our, the contractor that this, the city selects, um, to, to lead this effort. So the, the facilitator, I should say. So we're calling that sort of the, the selection team, which would include, uh, not only the consultant, but, um, maybe someone from the, the county as well. The county has been very, um, as, as Councilmember Lay said, very helpful. Um, I think it's also important, obviously, that task force members include, um, black indigenous and people of color. Uh, but, but it also includes a mixture of different folks with different experiences, residents and non-residents. And I think that's, that's a really, uh, unique aspect of this particular committee. If we're, if we're trying to, um, sort of have a critical look at our community and, and how, how we can be a more welcoming place and really foster equity, I think it's important to have not only the perspective of, of our residents, but people who, who either work here or, 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 or don't, um, who might have an interesting perspective on why maybe Louisville wasn't their first choice, um, for particular, for business or, or, or residents or, or whatever else. Um, and we, we run down a number of different aspects of, of, um, you know, people that we would hope would, would participate in a, in a community like, in, in a, in an effort like this. I think it's got a couple of specific deliverables. I've kind of alluded to them already, but these higher-level concepts for some sort of future, uh, future action or action plan, um, goals and objectives and tactics. Uh, and then they would be keeping the Council, um, e- either through the consultant or through their chair, um, in, uh, they would be in constant communication with the, the, the city council. Monthly updates is what we're asking for at this particular point. And then obviously recommendations for the next steps. So the, so you have in the packet, uh, a resolution. Um, you also have the staff memo. The resolution has a couple of sort of blanks in it where we, we really could use, um, Council's feedback. And one of those is, um, what is the timeline? Well, sorry, how many people should serve on a committee like this? Uh, Councilmember Lay and I have talked about, um, uh, about nine. We're trying to keep it sort of manageable in size, but large enough to have diverse experiences, but not too large in order to be, um, uh, unmanageable. When would the sunset of this particular committee be? We have thrown out the idea, since the six to twelve month timeframe is what we're looking at, we've talked about a formal sunsetting of this particular, uh, task force by the end of twenty twenty one. Um, and then I would ask that, you know, if there are particular things we call out in the, in the resolution, things like land use, transportation and business-related issues, um, to be sort of that we would ask the committee to, to focus on. Um, if there are other things, if you don't like those issues, or if there are other things that we have left out, that would be another place where I think Council, um, and Council feedback could be really helpful. So I'll leave it at that. Um, you know, I think Councilmember Lay and I can certainly talk about, or certainly answer questions. Um, and I know the city manager, obviously, and staff are here to, to answer questions as well. So, thank you.
Before, um, I, I, uh, asked the, uh, city manager to, to add her two cents on this. Um, recognize that, well, what we're proposing here is, is not a, uh, an end in itself institutionally. I think that it's, it's very clear that this is a long, this is a long-term work. And, uh, and it's also clear, at least it was to us, that we don't yet have, um, a good enough handle on what the issues are that we ought to be focused on. And that, uh, dictating those is not a very, uh, appropriate thing for, uh, folks on Council necessarily to do. Uh, and that one of the things we're charging or would be wanting to charge the group, the task force with is, okay, once you've finished your deliverable, what, you know, what kind of institutional step do you think would be good? Do we need, you know, do we need a council committee? Do we need a community committee? Do we need something else? That's something that we don't know enough right now to, to get. We need to move the ball forward in order to get to that step eventually. But we're not there yet. And this is, I, I think, uh, a way that we, uh, move that ball down the field. Um, uh, City Manager Bolster, do you want to add, uh, thoughts of your, of your own here? Uh, staff was very helpful in all of this process, by the way. And I, I want to thank, uh, both Councilmembers Brown and Dickinson, who've done marvelous work as well as staff on this and given us really good things to look for.
Yeah, this is Heather. I, I have nothing to add. Just happy to answer any questions. Thanks.
Thank you. So we'll pick it up for your members of the public for comment. If there are any members of the public that would care to comment on this agenda item, please raise your hand at this time. So then that takes us back over to Council discussion. Any Councilmembers have comments, questions? Feedback? Councilmember Lipton?
Sorry, I'm muted. Uh, thank you. So I, I do have a question, uh, for Kyle and Chris. It's all unclear to me whether what you're proposing is a city council-led task force or is this something gonna be more organic and led by members of the community, other members of the community outside the city council?
Yeah, and the, the answer, and Councilman Brown can chime in too, uh, is not to have councilmembers on this. I think we might have some role in, in helping select, but not, uh, this would be something that is community-driven with the help of a consultant and supportive staff.
Okay, thanks.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Thank you, Mayor. Um, and I want to thank my Council colleagues, uh, Councilor Lay, Councilor Brown and Councilor Dickinson, who helped get this started. Um, as a follow-up to the question from Councilor Lipton, um, you know, I, I'm looking at the proposed charge of the task force. And, um, when I was thinking about this, I, maybe I had a little bit different perspective. Um, your answer saying this would be the community and, and not members of council would be on this task force. So I'm looking at the four to five areas of concern. So the question would be, this, this task force, um, comes up with these four or five areas of concern. And then, then how do we translate that into policy and action on our part? Um, is a question, uh, but I, I'll leave it out there for now. The, the concept behind this, I think, is, is really, really good. And, uh, Councilor Lay used the words that I, you know, I appreciated in this, and this is really about keeping the conversation alive. And, you know, this isn't something that we, we do and we move on. This is something we continue to do. It's a verb. And so I, I really like that idea of, of keeping it alive. I also like the idea of, of, of selecting a task force, whatever that makeup is, so that we can, uh, do something where it's action-oriented and then we can start reacting to that and actually come up and, and working on plans there. You know, the, the task force, we're talking about the, doing identification of areas of concern, um, development of goals and objectives, and then tact, tactics to address. I guess that's where there's a question in my mind. If we don't have council members on the task force, how do they put, or how do we, when that comes to us, how do we put that in context where we can move ahead without us replowing that ground or rethinking those thoughts? So, um, I'm not criticizing. I'm just trying to make sure whatever we come up with, we can be as action-oriented as possible, um, so that we can keep the conversation alive in such a way that we're productive. So, thank you.
Uh, yeah. Um, Mayor, if you'd like, I can respond. Um, thank you, Mayor Protem, uh, Maloney. I appreciate that feedback. I, I think that is one of the challenges of any, um, you know, task force or advisory board, is how do we take, you know, the things that are important to that particular group, um, citizens who are volunteering their time and have identified particular issues, um, and turn it into real actionable, um, policy? Um, I would, I, I would hope that that, I think that ultimately comes from the Council's willingness to prioritize, um, the, the issues and the recommendations, um, that are identified by this particular task force. Um, you know, I will be very interested in seeing what they come up with. Um, and I know that I will make it a priority, um, to try to, to try to carry that forward. So that, that just has to become a part of our, um, of our council work, I think. Um, just like sustainability or, um, any of the other advisory task forces that we have that make recommendations that require council action would. So, um, it's not an easy thing, obviously. Uh, but, but part of the, part of, I think, the, the, the benefit, I would say, of having council, you know, oversee the task force but not be a part of it necessarily, um, is that it gives the task force, uh, a, a, a degree of independence. Um, and it takes away, it gives them the freedom that would be, um, that is, uh, without, without sort of council interference, if you will. Um, you know, to, to identify things that maybe we haven't thought of and that we wouldn't necessarily influence. So that, I think, was part of the, the idea of, um, of making it community members only, um, but having a close connection to the council in that way, so that we could, we could act on their recommendations quickly, but also not overly influence their work.
Mayor, can I add something to that? Um, you're, you're hitting the nail o- on the head, Mayor Protem, because, uh, you know, we have struggled, uh, as I think any community dealing with this does, with, um, how much do you try to dictate? How, you know, who, who's the one coming up with the ideas? How do they organize themselves and so forth? And, and, you know, we want to make this successful. Um, and one of the ways we make this successful, um, in terms of action-oriented, you know, actionable items is, we, we're not suggesting that they put together the equivalent of a, you know, uh, an EDI action plan, you know, uh, strategic plan. That's not what they're doing. Um, it's the goals and objectives that are most important, but we're creatures of- creatures of doing. And undoubtedly, people are going to have some thoughts about the tactics we might use to achieve those things. So we don't want to necessarily to get completely in the weeds, but I think that's just a natural way to to think about this. But the the way I think we we help, if if you will, we help to eventually, as council members, translate or or be the clutch between, you know, this task force, the engine that is going to come up with some ideas and the drivetrain, which is our city government, is to one, be careful and very thoughtful about who we retain as the consultant. And I think Councilmember Brown talked about about that. And I mentioned that that expert driven piece is really important, is really important for the community conversation. It's going to be even more important for this. And that's going to take funding. And it's going to be important for us not to to skimp on on that when it comes down to that. The the second thing is that that is a person that is going to need to be briefed by staff about what is going on within city government right now. The library, for example, doing some incredibly interesting work. And the task force should know about that. And I mean, you know, they're not coming into this with or they shouldn't come into there that kind of reinventing something or, you know, they need to understand and have some feedback about, oh, these are the kinds of things we do already. I think that will help to level set a little bit. I think another piece of it is the check in that we would be doing, you know, monthly so that we have some idea of their progress toward the deliverable that we're suggesting ought to come from them. And we can make, you know, we can offer some guidance about gee, is this, we really want to make sure you consultants that these folks under understand what we can and can't do. Because the worst thing we could do is to set them up with very little guidance at all, no conversations back and forth, crummy information in and out. And they come up with all kinds of recommendations that might be great for some other, for the schools, but not for a city government, right? So all those things, I think, we can, you know, we can bake into this. And that's the, at least that's the the idea of how we would kind of keep that process moving forward, more or less on a track to give us something useful. But all that said, Councilmember Brown brings up a great point, which is that frequently, these kinds of issues get they kind of, you have people giving you ideas and taking the ideas, using them, translating them. Sometimes we don't want, we want, we want to be pat, you know, we want people to pat us on the back or we want something easy or whatever. And potentially, there are going to be some hard conversations that we may have to have. That's good. And so, you know, we don't want to cabin them too tightly and miss that. But I think there are ways that, you know, their conversation can happen back and forth without our being too intrusive. So I mean, that's that's what I would add to what Councilmember Brown talking about. And I I don't know whether City Manager Balser might have some thoughts about that, too, because we've spoken in our meetings about what kind of staff support would be necessary.
Well, let's keep, there's a good queue of council members. So let's keep the council discussion going and then see if we need some more once we get a little further. So I'll weigh in at this point. So there's one piece that a lot of community members have talked to me about that seems like it could be added to this, that it it might make it address. So I've gotten a lot of community feedback that people are looking for more community opportunities around education and enrichment and engagement for the broader community. And so if we could add that as something that the group, I mean, I understand the way it's put together, the task force is looking at areas for improvement, but perhaps we could add a second objective of looking for what would be valuable ways that we could engage and enrich the entire community and have more educational opportunities for the entire community? Because there's a real desire for that from people. I know the library is doing a great job, but I think letting the community tell us, hey, we want more cultural council events. We like the ones you're doing, but we want more. We want different educational programming that's for families. I don't know. I don't know what they'll propose, but if we could add that in as a task force objective to look at that engagement side for the community, not just the issue side, I think that would bring in some of the spirit of some of the suggestions I've heard from community members. And then my only other comment on sort of the things we're weighing in on tonight is the six month to a year timeframe. I like, I really like the idea of sunsetting it so the task force, it's like it accomplishes something. On the other hand, we've put forward some pretty challenging things to accomplish in that timeframe. And so I'm just worried that there won't be enough time to get the actual it it's easy to put together a plan that says you don't have enough housing. Your housing cost is too high, so you need to densify. I mean, I could write that plan tonight. But how do you really get real data that looks at, you know, well, why does this work sometimes and it doesn't others? Like, you know, what is the makeup of the community at large? And then what is it at alfalfa's? And so did that work or didn't it work? And why not? Or how about like, you know, the Rhino neighborhood in Denver? You know, maybe that checks all those boxes of you provided more housing, you know, it was denser. It has good access to transit, but you actually gentrified a neighborhood and kicked everyone out. So how do you have data and more nuanced conversations? And don't just get a short, you know, this is a two month answer and this is the answer. I I just think it's, I think it's complicated to steal from Caleb. That's what Caleb and I say to each other. It's complicated. So I'm just concerned that saying we're going to be done in six months with recommendations that we won't have enough critical thinking, data, understanding of our area to be able to know what to do next. And so I guess I feel bad for saying this to the group because I've said on one hand, I really like the idea of a task force that has a specific timeframe. But then, on the other hand, I'm saying, I think this timeframe we've I I'm not sure we can accomplish it in the timeframe that we've laid out. So that's that's my thinking. Councilmember Dickinson?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I think, you know, one of the things that comes to my mind is obviously, you know, yesterday was was MLK Junior Day and his birthday was recently. And, you know, in 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 sixty, I think, nineteen sixty six, he was leading the movement for a Fair Housing Act and the Civil Rights Act. And it it failed. It failed while he was was alive. And in in nineteen sixty eight, he was assassinated and later that year as a martyr and and listening to his message, the federal government, you know, stepped up and and passed the Fair Housing Act and passed the Civil Rights Act in nineteen sixty eight after his death. And eighteen years later, we honored honored Dr. King with a federal holiday. And and fourteen years later, South Carolina finally recognized that day as a as a holiday for the state of North Carolina, contingent on Confederate Memorial Day also being added as a as a recognition. So now, fast forward twenty one years later, and what, fifty fifty five years since Martin Luther King's work? And we're still we're still struggling. And so the the reason I bring that history up, obviously, is because MLK Junior Day was yesterday, but also because, you know, if you if you watch a marathon, nobody really cares about the start. That isn't interesting. And that isn't it's nothing, right? It it has no, it it has no impact on our sense of accomplishment. But of course, you can see the metaphor ending, like you can't, you can't win a marathon and you can't certainly run a marathon without starting. And so we have a lot of work to do as a community. And, you know, for fifty five years after Dr. King's, you know, work on on even just fair housing and 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 fair elections, we have a lot of work to do in in the city of Louisville. And so I really appreciate the work of our residents, the work of people around the country. I'm also reminded of Dr. King's quote, you know, oh, I don't want to get it wrong. Injustice anywhere is a threat to justice everywhere. And, you know, in Louisville, I think, you know, we're, I'm in a place in which I don't feel threatened. I don't, I don't see injustice here every day. But, you know, we have a, we have a part to play in our in our larger community in doing the things that will make a difference in a lo in a long period of time. So I really appreciate the work that everybody's been doing, especially council members, you know, Brown and Lay in the last couple of months and and staff. And I think that Councilmember Brown brought up a good point is, you know, we have a sustainability committee. We have economics, you know, whether it's Brad or EBC, we have a historic commission. And certainly, it seems appropriate that we have some some sort of, you know, equity committee, commission, task force. This is fine. I'm not, I'm not judging what we're looking at today in in that sense. But it's obvious to me that this is, this is really important. And when we talk about sunsetting, you know, I I think the task force can certainly sunset when the task force accomplishes its tasks. But certainly, you know, this is going to be ongoing for us for decades, for another fifty five years. And so what the task force comes up with, I think, will be really interesting. I think what we all need to be prepared for is what, you know, the hard choices we're going to have to make. It's not now. It's not, you know, it's easy eight months ago to say, you know, we oppose racism. And it's easy a few months ago to say we want some some action. And it's easy right now, tonight, to say I'm in support of a task force. But I think the real challenge for us is going to come six months from now, a year from now, I don't know, when when things are brought to us that we then need to vote on that are really tough. Prioritizing budgets, prioritizing initiatives, prioritizing what we're working on. And are we going to listen to that commission? And so I think Councilmember Mayor Protem Maloney, you know, brought up a good point that how are, how are we going to empower this group to actually make a difference? And I'm obviously paraphrasing, but how are they going to bring things forward to us so that we can listen and that we can adjust and we can change policy? Because the idea is that a a community outside of the seven of us is going to get together and think about these issues and then come to us with ideas. And then we're going to have to react to maybe some really big ideas. Maybe not. We don't know, right? That that's the point is 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 we don't know, because this isn't as Councilmember Brown, I think, said, we shouldn't, we need to stay out of it a little bit. We need to let it come to us and then react to what what comes to us as opposed to trying to create it. And I think we're going to face some really tough choices a year from now or six months from now when it comes back. And I'm actually almost done, Mayor, I promise. But I think the idea of non residents being a part of a Louisville task force or commissioner committee is paramount in 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 this moment because one of the things they're talking about is a lack of inclusion, right? And so how do you engage people who aren't included if you don't include people who aren't here? And so I think I think it's critical that we that we don't think, well, hold on, this is a Louisville conversation. If you're not a Louisville resident, you don't, you don't belong in this conversation. We really, really do need to involve people that are not included in our community right now in the conversation. I wrote down a lot of notes, so I'm just kind of like looking them over. And I think I've, I think I've, I think I've touched on every everything I wrote down. And I'll just circle back to say, I really appreciate the work that's been done by so many people and the expertise that's held by so many people that aren't me and and their brilliance. And I I I'm really looking forward to supporting whatever we decide to, however, whatever direction we decide to move and how we do that, I'm I'm interested in supporting that movement. And then I'm really curious to see how it all happens as it as it comes back to us. And Mayor, appreciate your patience with my long time on the mic. So, thank you.
Councilmember Lipton.
I see Kyle's been hanging also. Does he want to respond to anything before I go or?
I I can, I can certainly talk a little bit. I I think that both the mayor and Councilmember Dickinson mentioned. First of all, thank you, Councilmember Lipton. I I just, they mentioned the the length of time. And I think both, I don't, I think I speak for Councilmember Lay as well. And I say that it wasn't really in the the sunset of this particular task force is meant to sort of be a forcing function well, for the recommendations to make sure that, you know, because even though it bends towards justice, I'm impatient with the arc of the moral universe being very long, if that makes sense, to paraphrase, to paraphrase a bit. And so what I was hoping is that, you know, because of the urgency of some of these these conversations that we would, we would be able to accomplish some some basic recommendations quite quickly. One of those recommendations might be that we need a long term group, council to or committee or something that would continue this conversation for years or whatever. But I was, we were trying, I think, to lead that up to the to the task force itself to decide what was the appropriate way to continue this conversation? How do we, how do we sort of have some short term recommendations? And then how do we have some longer term, you know, steps? So that, so I just wanted to to force that. And and if, and I think I would be, just as an idea, we could certainly put in something, a clause into the into the resolution that would require council to revisit the task force within, you know, by the end of the year before the sunset is up to sort of to think about whether the task force itself needs more time or something, something else, you know? So that that is often the way that sort of sunsets work is that there's a review of the sunset. And then you, and then you make a decision either to, you know, to let it sunset or to to continue it. So that's that's the only, but, you know, totally open to 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 the concerns there. So thank you, Councilmember Lipton. I'll defer back. Sorry.
Sure, thank you. I mean, there's, there's something about this that's making me feel a bit uneasy and maybe a couple of comments. First is the use of the nomenclature task force, just as a what we might want to call this, because, you know, last time, I think, we had a task force is when we were trying to design and develop a rec center. And it was very, you know, it was a a physical project. It wasn't trying to affect cultural change for a community. And the term task force kind of, I think, lends itself to a project or something like that. This is different. What we're trying to do is develop a roadmap. And, you know, whether we call it a committee or something else, I I think it it just shouldn't be just the term task force, for some reason bothers me in this context. I think it should be as broad based as possible. I think more people, the better, so you can actually have more inclusion in the effort. Again, not to use the rec center as Again, not to use the rec center as a good example, but I think we had eleven or twelve people on the rec center task force. And, and we met every two weeks. And we had just about a hundred percent participation and attendance every two weeks for six months, just to get done a project like that. And in this case, you know, you're going to have to have a lot of commitment and a lot of buy-in and participation by the people that you select to this. And I think you got to be very careful who you do select. We don't just get people that are quote unquote volunteers. We want people that are very committed and really want to, you know, affect change and willing to spend the time and the energy that's going to be necessary to do this. I, I don't know if I agree with everything in here or the approach. And, and it would help me, I mean, unless we have to do this tonight. I'd like to know more about what other comparable communities have done that have done this kind of effort and what has worked, what hasn't, what they might do differently. Because I think there are quite a few communities even within a tri-county area that's kind of gone down this path. And I'd be very curious to see or hear from, from them what they did and how did it go? And again, what they might have done differently. So I don't see that yet in the analysis, the report, but I think it's a very important thing to know, at least for me to feel comfortable with the direction that we're setting. I think this whole thing about sunsetting is, I mean, I think it's in hard nomenclature. I, I think, you know, you do want to set some maybe reasonably aggressive goals. I don't know if we have to call it sunsetting or we can just say, these are our goals, is to have some kind of deliverables, you know, by a certain points in time or a final report at some point in time. But I'm certainly supportive of going down this path. And I do appreciate the work that's been done on it. I'm not sure it's quite ready, but I think it can be made better and maybe it will be ready in a short period of time. Thank you.
Councilmember Fahy.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I would also add my thanks to the group who got us this far. I think it's, it's a wonderful start. I will say for the, the sunsetting portion of it, that I like the idea of having a set time that could then be extended or shortened if, if the committee doesn't feel the need to continue any longer. For the members, I also agree that it should be a large group. You don't want to call it a task force. You call it, you know, research committee or research group or, you know, there's a lot of other terms that could be used to name it. And as for, for what they're going to do, I, I kind of agree with Councilman Lipton's comments about not having a real mandate. But that could actually be their first task is to research the other communities around us that have done something like this and decide what they want to recommend themselves as being the best way forward.
Thank you, Councilmember Lay.
Yeah, I'll piggyback on, on something that Councilmember Fahy just said. The, the materials that you have do have, as you probably saw, some descriptions of what other communities have done. I, I would bring, bring us back to the point of something that Councilmember Lou used to say, that we have kind of a, a certain sort of way of doing things in Louisville. This is, of course, breaking us out of the box a, a little bit, right? But I think it is sort of our our duty to, to get this thing started. I think the, the idea that that Councilmember Fahy just suggested, which is that it is one of the first things maybe to, to start them thinking about, you know, for the long haul, what is it that other communities are doing? And, and are any of those models very useful? I, I tend to think that probably that, that's going to be something that's going to be better at the end of the process, just because there is so much going on in this area right now. It is, it's, it's moving very quickly. And that's, that's a good thing. But there, you know, the stuff that we have in our packet may be all outdated, you know, a little bit of times. But I, I think that is one way we can get at this. The, the sunsetting, I don't, I don't feel really strongly about it. People, I, I think I'm all for saying, look, if we need more time, we're not going to just shut everything down because they're not quite finished or what. I don't think anybody has any desire to do that. That's not bad optics all over the place. And it's pretty offensive if people are really doing stuff that's useful. So I think we could find ways. I, I think City Attorney Kelly can probably offer some language to, to help us with that. About the name, I mean, that's, it's an interesting thought. I think one of the reasons Councilmember Brown and I started moving toward that is that was something that, I don't know, the Mayor Protem or others in the initial meeting that sent us off to do some of this work more recently. You know, that was sort of the thought that maybe that was a good term. I think the one thing, I, I, I get Councilmember Lipton, I, I do appreciate your, your comment. And I, I don't have a hugely strong feeling about it. I, I want it to be descriptive. In any event, because I, I think it's important that people know this is not it is not the thing. It's the, it's the step before the thing, if you will, or a step along the way. But I don't want people who are, you know, that we sign up for a certain period of time to, to accomplish and, and produce a certain deliverable to suddenly find themselves on a committee that doesn't end. We, we don't really want to do that. And we want to make sure, I mean, it may be that some of them do end up on whatever we choose later to deal with. But I, I don't want to put that on them. I, I think that's a, a bit much. And I think the idea of a, I don't know, the, the reason I like task force is it does imply that we are kind of time-focused, time-bound. There's an urgency. And that's, and I think that's consistent with what we're trying to do. I don't think we dilute it by calling it the same thing that, you know, you, you guys called the, the group that, that did the, the rec center. But I, that said, you know, I'm not wedded. I, I don't know the Councilmember Brown or I really, it's more of the concept that we're trying to capture here. So I hope that, that kind of gives you some sense of why we fixed on that term. But, you know, it doesn't.
Thank you. So I'm just going to pause the conversation for a second. So it's every, I believe everybody's had a chance to speak. At this point, we've had a lot of good conversation. There are obviously some differences of opinion. So I'm going to try to sort of frame where it sounded like the majority of members were going. And I may do a terrible job, given that there were some diverse views on what people were saying. So, you know, that'll give everyone an opportunity to correct the record and, and make it clear where we think we're going. So it sounded like from the conversation, the group was supportive of going forward with forming this task force. And the task force would really identify what we, what they need to be focusing on. So we wanted to intentionally leave some of that open-ended. It sounded like the task force would have ten people on it and that folks were supportive of adding an additional task that would be like a task number four under section C, that would be to identify opportunities for community engagement, enrichment and education. And that the task force shall sunset at the end of 2021. So it sounds, I, I'm just, I'm trying to take a stab out there to sort of say where I think it sounded like we may have been headed based on people's comments. And then I'll look to the group to, you know, clean up the, clean up my statements and make it exactly where the group wants it to go. Councilmember Brown.
Yeah, Mayor, I think that, that, that was what I heard as well. And so I'll, I'll just go ahead and make a formal motion just to keep the conversation going to approve Resolution Five, Series 2021 with a sunset of December 31st, 2021 with a size of the task force of eleven people, I think. With the additional issue area that we suggest the task force look at for, as a sort of community educational opportunities. And then I will add the amendment that requires the council to examine the task force by December 1st, 2021 as to whether the count, the task force needs to continue or should continue and sunset.
There's a motion on the second. I'm just trying to make sure every blank was filled in. Just give me one, couple more seconds to check that.
Can I hear who seconded the motion? I didn't.
It was Councilmember Dickinson.
Oh.
No. It wasn't?
Yes. It's me.
Oh.
Thank you.
It was Councilmember Lay. I was pretty sure.
I take that as a compliment, actually. If you thought I was Councilmember Dickinson.
I thought it was.
Better, better looking of the two of us by far. Except for the glasses.
I don't have glasses on anytime.
All right. It looks like that fills in all the blanks. And I just, for clarification for the motion, Councilmember Brown, is it acceptable to you if we say instead of just educational, enrichment, engagement and educational?
Yes, thank you.
Is that okay with the second or?
It is.
Great. All right. So now discussion of the motion. Mayor Protem Maloney.
Mayor, I see that the city manager has her hand up and I'll, I'll defer to the city manager for now.
Great. City Manager Balsor.
Yeah, thanks. I just thought it might be helpful to just include something that suggests some short-term objectives and long-term objectives. So it kind of gets to the task force idea. So that, because we won't be able to address everything in the six to 12 months. So might be helpful for them to, you know, again, make some shorter and longer-term suggestions that might help focus them.
Thank you. And City Manager Balsor, do you have a suggestion where to include that for the motion or in second or to consider?
I don't, but let me take a quick look here.
Okay. While you're looking, we'll go to Mayor Protem Maloney.
Thank you, Mayor. I, I support the motion and we might tweak it a little bit. I'm sure I will support those tweaks. And I have a little teeny, tiny, tiny, minor one. In section four D, it says, provide monthly updates to city council as task force activities and plan next steps. And we did the work plan last week. We set aside four meetings for this particular topic. So I'm okay if some of those monthly updates are written reports and not necessarily meeting, taking meeting time just to keep us up to speed. So that's a little tiny comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Protem Maloney. Do you want that in the actual resolution or is it okay if we give council direction to that end? I mean, I think it, I think what you proposed can be captured within the spirit of the resolution. And we can just make it clear that that's the direction that written updates with the four quarter, with the four actual council meetings.
I concur with your perspective, Mayor.
Okay. Other council comments? Discussion of the resolution? City Manager Balsor, did, I know it was a very short period of time. Did you have a chance to think about where we might insert that about the short-term and the long-term goals?
Yeah, there's a couple of different places. And, you know, again, and maybe it's not necessary. Maybe it's, it's implicit in the, in the conversation, but under section four C, it says, develop discreet written recommendations. You could say discreet written short-term and long-term recommendations. You could also go down under C, number three, where it says some tactics or approaches. Again, you could add short-term and long-term in there as well. So, you know, whichever, I don't know if the city attorney wants to weigh in or mayor, what, you and the rest of council, whatever you think might be the most appropriate place.
I, I think those two suggestions make a lot of sense. Councilmember Brown, is that a friendly amendment you can accept?
Absolutely.
And Councilmember Lay?
Yeah.
Yeah, that sounds great. And then we'll check in with the city attorney, City Attorney Kelly.
Yes, I think that makes sense. Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Okay. So any other discussion of the resolution this evening or additions, changes? All right. Seeing that, can we please have a roll call vote?
Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Mayor Stolson?
Yes. Thank you, everyone. That takes us to our next agenda item this evening, which is our executive session. So we are going to move into an executive session for real property acquisition. And I'll turn it over to the city attorney to open the discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. As noted on the meeting agenda, the mayor is requesting an executive session for consideration of potential real property acquisitions and dispositions only as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy pursuant to section five dash two C of the city's Home World Charter and CRS section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, A. Prior to entertaining any motion, the city clerk will read a statement required by the city code.
It is the policy of the city to conduct public business and meetings open to the public. While in executive session, it is inappropriate to take straw votes, keep minutes or make any final decisions. It is the duty of each council member to ensure executive sessions are conducted in strict compliance with this ordinance, state and federal law, and any applicable provisions of the state and federal constitutions. If at any time the scope, nature or parameter of this executive session goes beyond the publicly stated topic, it is the responsibility of the city council to terminate and cease any further deliberation within the executive session and return to the public meeting. Only those topics described in city ordinances may be discussed in an executive session. Those topics are summarized as follows. Where federal or state law requires the information being discussed remain confidential. Certain personnel matters involving only employees directly appointed by the city council and other personnel matters upon request of the city manager or mayor. Consideration of water rights and real property acquisitions and dispositions, but only as to appraisals, value estimates and strategy. And legal consultation with an attorney representing the city with respect to pending litigation.
Regarding the authority for the executive session, section five dash two C of the Home World Charter authorizes an executive session for the purpose of consideration of real property acquisitions and dispositions by the city, but only as to appraisals and other value estimates and strategy for the acquisition or disposition of such property. An executive session for this purpose is also authorized by the Open Meetings Law, section twenty-four, six, four, oh, two, four, A of the Colorado revised statutes. With that, you may entertain a motion to go into executive session for consideration of real property acquisitions.
Thank you. I will move, we go into executive session for the purpose of consideration of real property acquisitions and dispositions. And that the executive session includes City Manager Heather Balsor, Parks Recreation and Open Space Director Nathan Mosley, Deputy City Manager Megan Davis, and our City Attorney Kathleen Kelly.
Second.
Thank you. There's a motion in a second. Can we please get a roll call vote?
Mayor Stolson?
Yes.
Councilmember Lipton? Councilmember Brown?
Yes.
Councilmember Fahy?
Yes.
Councilmember Lay?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Maloney?
Yes.
Councilmember Dickinson?
Yes.
Thank you. We will now adjourn into executive session. So council members will close this screen and then open the other.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I just want to make sure our link is working. I, I clicked on it from my email and it isn't. So just don't be surprised. I just want to make sure our link is working, I, I clicked on it from my email and it isn't, so just don't be surprised. Maybe it'll work great, but if it doesn't, don't be surprised.
Okay, we'll work it out.
Yep, okay, bye.